I'd like to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlem City Commission of the Order and at this time call upon the...
Please draw up for the invitation.
Heavenly Father, we can be in this evening, Lord, we thank you for all the many blessings that you bestowed upon our community. Lord, we ask that you give us guidance tonight as we discuss and make decisions for the benefit of the people of the community. And, Lord, we just pray that you would bring us some rain. We hope that our cotton farmers are out of the field so that you can bring us some rain and relieve us of this drought. And, Father, we just ask these blessings in Jesus' name.
May I please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting tonight. I'm glad that you're here to come out to participate in local government. And we, at this time, we're going to go to item one, Public Announcement of Events. Are there any events to be announced?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'd like to remind everybody, the third of four Blues on the Hills concerts the City of Harlem puts on will be Saturday, August the 18th. The headliner is W.C. Clark. We've been keeping you up to date with this. The fourth concert will be in early November and will be associated with the Dallas Cowboys. So that's going to be exciting. There's also, the United States Tennis Association is having a Zone Area Tournament, the ZAT Tournament, next weekend hosted by the city's tennis sites as well as a couple of school district sites. And then our first Family Movie Night, which we will show Dr. Seuss's The Lorax, will be Labor Day weekend, Saturday, September the first, and I'll have more for that on your next time.
Mayor, I'd just like to announce that this Saturday, August, or not this Saturday, but on August the 4th, our next neighborhood cleanup schedule or cleanup, neighborhood cleanup sponsored by the City of Harlem is going to take place. It's going to be in Mr. Peck's Shaw's district. On the meeting place will be in Greenway in Little Creek.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, and announcements of public events. I'd like to call upon Coach Tucker to announce the event. Tell us about the event that occurred rather than have you waited until the end of the meeting? Have you, under public announcements, go ahead and tell us and make the recognition now that folks have wanted to talk about this one thing?
Do I need to...
Yes, if you come up off to the podium and...
While they're gathering here, I'll just tell you about the, first of all, we want to thank the Commission and City of Harlem for your support this last year. It really meant a lot to us and it allowed us to do an awesome job at the Houston venue for the National Junior Olympics. We took about 70 kids between Roma, West Laco, and Harlem. We placed second out of 41 teams, which is the best showing we've had in the last 10 years. And we competed against teams from all over the United States and a couple of teams, I think, from Qatar and Saudi Arabia, places like that. But real proud of the kids and we want to thank you guys for all your support. We have some children here that'd like to say something and show off their medals and the results of their hard work.
And this event occurred when?
This last week. It was between the 26th and the 30th of July in Houston. It's the National Junior Olympics Swimming Meet, and at the same time, they had a track and field and all the other sports.
Hello, my name is Cynthia Englett, and I would like to thank you for allowing me and my swimmates and Coach Tucker for allowing us to use the facilities because if it wasn't for you, guys, we wouldn't have gone to National Junior Olympics and gotten these wonderful awards and achievements and these medals. And many of our swimmers competed and we were in the top 16 out of hundreds of swimmers. And we were, if we were lucky enough, we also made it to finals. So we swam two, not only one time a day, but we swam twice. And we made it in the top eight. So, thank you again.
So, are any of you Michael Phelps fans?
I'm actually a fan of Natalie Kaufman.
Well, we want to congratulate you. Congratulations, that's great.
Thank you.
You represented Harlem well, and we hope that, yeah, one of you might become, might represent us in the Olympics at one of these days. All right, stick with it.
Thank you.
I'm Maggie Englett, and I'm representing the parents of the Harlem Aquatics team. And I would also like to thank you for allowing us the use of both Victor and Pendleton Park pools because you have provided our children with this wonderful opportunity that they can compete state and nationally and do us proud, coming in second against other U.S. teams, coming in second against a team that had 138 swimmers and we only had 74, 75 swimmers. We did an awesome job, and we'd like to thank Coach also for his wonderful tutelage. Thank you very much.
I just want one other comment. A lot of these kids are repeat performers. Some of them have been going to Junior Olympics for the last three or four years, and they keep just, they just keep getting better and better. So it's an awesome opportunity to watch them grow and develop.
Well, just remember, that pool is not ours, that pool is yours. That's the, that pool belongs to the citizens of Harlem. And so unfortunately, it belongs to not just you guys, it belongs to a bunch of other guys too. So sometimes it's hard scheduling it if the schedules work out. But we appreciate your patience with that, and you young folks, remember, that's your pool. So congratulations to all of you.
Thank you.
I have two, approval of the meeting minutes for regular meetings, last third, 2012.
Mayor, I'd like to watch the group for the minutes.
I'll second that.
All of us, the fair to say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. At Senator Jenna Allen, 3A and 10, motion put out.
Senator Alvin, second.
All of us, the fair to say aye.
Aye.
Those who'd like to sign motion carries. Item four, report by the Harlem Police Department on Operation Status. Chief?
Very good.
On up, I want you to know that the Economic Development Corporation last night at their meeting took note of the impressive statistics that you're about to share with us as part of their report.
Well, thank you. We like that, we appreciate it. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, good afternoon. The report, it'll be brief, it just kind of highlights some of the things that we consider important. We certainly keep track of many more statistics than this. It's like Moneyball over there, but this is what we consider to be important if I can make this thing work. First of all, we're showing up there is a violent crime comparison over the last three years. And as you can see, for year-to-date, this year, we're actually down 20%. At the beginning of the year, we set internal goals, and our goal was to have an overall UCR crime rate reduction of 20%, and we're on target for that. The next slide is property crime alone, and as you can see there, we're down 19%. You know, our trend lines show that continued decreases are expected, and we certainly anticipate that to be the case. As you can see, the overall UCR Part I crimes are down 19%. Again, our goal is 20. You know, the overall number goes as the property crime number goes, and actually, that's a good thing. About 70% of our crimes are larcenies or thefts. So as far as violent crimes go, we're doing, we're doing well. Our next thing is our traffic contacts. Certainly, they're not tickets, they're just, we practice what we call, well, there are many, many facilities. One of them is called D-DAX. It's the Data-Driven Approaches to Crime and Traffic Safety. And basically, what that says is if you overlay your heavy crime and traffic areas on top of your heavy crime areas, they're going to kind of mirror each other. So the thought process is that you increase your traffic contacts and you'll bring down crime. So as you can see, we've increased our traffic contacts by about 156%. Where we used to average about 1,500 a month, we now average about close to 4,000. And like, again, they're just stops, they're not tickets. As for the citations, they're actually up lately. We've had some months where they're only up 3%, and the reason I mention that is it's about the contacts, not about the citations. Whether they issue a warning written or a citation is completely up to the officer. Our calls for service, in the industry, they actually call that the flywheel effect. But, you know, if you, if you make all these contacts and you do all these things and crime comes down, then your calls for service come down, and then the reports that the guys have to take come down, and therefore, they have more time to make more contacts, and everything just goes the way it's supposed to go. As you can see, our calls for service are down 46%. The officers actually love that because it gives them more time to stay in their, in their district and make their positive contacts. And as far as the reports taken, they're actually down 27%. I suggest that's because there's a lot less crime, and we think that's great as well. And our arrests are up 13%. A lot of those are outstanding warrants, and due to many of the stops, because, you know, we check everybody. And the last slide, because I promised it'd be quick, our operational overtime is actually down about 56% year-to-date. That covers things like minimum staffing, or late calls, or the controllable court issues. We stay on it, and certainly, we try to keep it as low as we can. That's really all the slides I have. I'll be happy to answer anything, and hopefully, the answers won't be too long.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
One other thing I'd like to say is, I think that we divided up the districts by police patrols.
Yes, sir.
I think that has a lot to do with traffic crimes.
Mm-hmm.
So that was, that was actually...
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Yeah, what we've, what we've done, just, you know, we've divided the city into eight districts, and each one of these districts kinds of, they generate the same amount, more or less, of calls for service or the same amount of criminal activity. And we basically have the same officer in there always. So the same officer on day shift, the same officer on evenings, the same officer on graveyard, the same gang officer, the same narcotics officer, the same community relations officer. And basically, it's a team concept, like they're responsible for that area, and they, they communicate, and they're held accountable for it. So you're right, I think they've taken ownership and they've really done a great job.
But Chief, I want to say definitely from experience, I really appreciate your efforts. And I know we have a couple of officers here who represent a number of other guys here out there, guys and yells working out there. So certainly, our community appreciates your efforts.
Yeah, thank you.
And the officers as well.
Yeah, they're doing a great job. Thank you, thank you very much.
They've done a good job.
But, yes, any questions? I also want to say that, you know, really, that's, I think that really the number one thing that the citizens of our community want to know about is this, they want to know, are we safe and how well are we doing? This is obviously a great report card mid-year, and it's something, it's a great thing to communicate. I know we had a good Sunday story, the Star, about this, about what's going on. But it also works hand, you know, this is part of our quality of life in our community, and that goes hand-in-hand with economic development. I think that's why the Economic Development Corporation took note of this, because when you're trying to recruit people to move businesses or come to our community to work, as healthcare professionals, for example, it's a, this is a good story to tell. This is a great story to tell, that Harlem is a safe place, that crime's going down, and that they don't have anything to fear moving to this area near the border. So congratulations, it's great, great work for all of your team, everyone that contributes to make all this happen.
I'm certainly related. Thank you.
I don't know if you saw the statistics today in Yahoo, Harlem was rated the cheapest place to live in the United States of America.
Right.
So I think we had it all.
It's also a good selling point. Item five is Consider Take Action to Adopt Resolution to Improve One-Year Action Plan Budget for Fiscal Year 2012/13, Year 38, Community Development Block Program, CUG Program for Fiscal Year 2012/13, Year 18, and Home Investment Partnerships Program.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. After the Commission reviewed and approved the one-year action plan for fiscal year 2012/2013, a 30-day comment period began. On June 28th, the Community Development Advisory Board held a public hearing to obtain citizen input as required. Two residents were in attendance, however, neither decided to submit any comments. Upon approval of the resolution, the plan will be sent to HUD for final review and approval. Staff recommends approval of the one-year action plan as presented.
Mayor, I'd like to make most of, we adopt the resolution to improve the one-year action plan.
Yes, I can now.
Any discussion? All of us, the fair to say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Thank you again, thank you to all of our CUG Board members who are here and worked so hard to put together such a great program. I want to recognize you. Stand up. Thank you again for all your hard work. I have six, Presentation and Discussion by the City Manager Regarding the Operation Crackdown Program for the Texas National Guard.
Mayor and Commissioners, I wanted to present you with the problem that we initiated last year, and it's the City of Harlem Operation Crackdown. For the, we anticipate them coming September the 17th through the 27th. And for the benefit of the public, I wanted to just do a kind of a quick presentation of what the program is. Basically, it's a partnership with the Texas National Guard for the demolition of unsafe structures, in which the National Guard provides the labor and equipment, and the city provides for the hauling and the keeping fees. The benefits to our community are the demolition of more structures with the existing funds that we have in place. And then the big benefit to the public and to the citizens of Harlem is that the demolition is done at no cost to property owners. Last year, we went to this program, and we had about 20, 25 or 26 unsafe structures that were demolished. Traditionally, the city has a demolition program, but that targets unsafe structures. This particular operation that we want to keep moving forward targets unsafe structures related directly to drugs and criminal activity. This year, we have about 25 structures that we're trying to demolish, and I'll just kind of give you a quick rundown on some of the homes that we're looking at.
Are these abandoned homes?
Yes, they're, they're abandoned homes. And I think the key point of this particular program is that, you know, the property owner has to participate, they have to provide a waiver of liability. We need to obtain clearance from the Texas Historical Commission. Everything that we do is done at no cost to the property owners, and we have substantial savings in our budget by working with them. Our, I want to congratulate our staff, the planning department, the co-enforcement officers, inspectors, the police department, the public works, everybody that participates and makes this a reality. But more importantly, I think we want to thank the National Guard for, for once again, choosing to come down to Harlem. Typically, it's very difficult for a city to get on their list, and it's much more difficult to get on the list twice. So we've, we've been able to do that, and hopefully, we'll keep them coming back to the city of Harlem.
Well, this is a great program, obviously, and it's a great, and we do thank the National Guard, and everybody, everyone on the staff that's been working with this. What's important to them, the National Guard, and we talked to them last year, it's not that, not that they're saving us money, but they're contributing to the improvement of safety in our community by tearing down these structures. So that's their mission, and that's their goal, and we appreciate them helping make this, just that, make cleaner, safer.
Well, you know, Mayor, in my district, along last year when we did this on D Street next to the cemetery, there was a house that was populated by gang members. And they actually had started that house on fire three times. Where the fire department had to be called out, and then it wasn't demolished even after the third time until Carlos got the National Guard involved, and they took that house down in about half an hour. So that's the benefit.
Yep. All right. Unless there's any other questions or comments on that, we'll move on to item seven, which is Consider Take Action to Approve a Resolution, the Acceptance of Anticipated Federal Aviation Administration Grant Offer of the 3848-0101-054-2012, in approximately $478,000 to the airfield guidance sign replacement project, available to management for Brian. Welcome, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. We applied for the grant, and the FAA has awarded it to us, and I'm here to ask for you guys to accept those resolution for that grant in approximately $478,000. And that grant will cover the cost to replace the airfield guidance taxiway and runway sign system on the airport.
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we take action to approve the resolution.
Second.
All of us, the fair to say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you all for working that out, getting that done. Item eight, Public Hearing to Consider or Not, on First Reading and Amending the City of Harlem Southern Ordinance, Section 12.03, Sign Regulations pertaining to the maximum sign area allowed in the general retail district. To thank the Maxum Sign Area Lab and the General GR Retail, and the City of Harlem.
Mayor and Commissioners, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. The city is proposing to amend the sign regulations pertaining to those properties that are located along the expressway and within the general retail district. Under the current ordinance, the maximum allowed signage is based on three square feet per linear foot of building facing the street. However, there is a provision on the ordinance currently which states where the maximum sign area can never be less than 100 square feet. Staff is just proposing one change, just to expand this provision that for the properties located along the expressway and within the general retail district, the maximum permitted sign area can never be less than 175 square feet. Again, this is just for the properties on the expressway and in the general retail district. This would help those properties that are, that are limited in street front edge or don't have a wider building front edge. Either a lot of times a building that may be oriented where the widest portion of the building is not facing the street. For example, this, you look at this picture here, this is a lot in a structure here, the widest portion of this building is not actually not facing the street, it's actually facing the western side of the property. So it would help those type of situations. So staff is recommending approval, subject to the ordinance. I'll take any questions on the item.
So that you're going, this will allow then larger signs?
It would allow a little bit, little bit larger signs, right, just by 75 square feet, but just for the properties that are on the expressway.
That's, that's like what, a 40% increase, 50% increase in square footage per sign?
No, slightly less than that, because again, it's based on the width of the building facing the street, you know, basically based on whatever your building front edge faces the street. Like in this particular case, if this was in a regular general retail district, you would be allowed 90 square feet, or actually 100 square feet, because there is a provision that it's three square feet per linear foot of building facing the street, but however, it can never be less than 100 square feet. And staff is just proposing to expand it to 75, additional 75 square feet just for the properties on the expressway. And the reason for properties on the expressway is typically those tend to require more visibility, their signage is a little bit larger, so it's just going to pertain to those properties on the expressway.
Yeah, what's the, did you have demand for this, or you just...
Commissioner, I kind of brought this up because there's an enterprise rental car on the expressway between streets, and they have never been able to open, have a sign in their front of their building.
Because that's a narrow...
It's a small building, it's pretty much like that. So, I mean, it's just a matter of a few square feet that they did not, they did not comply. So for a national company not to be able to advertise, that's a terrible thing for Harlem.
There's big signs all along the interstates of the country.
All right. Item A, you're supposed to carry, you have to carry government, is anyone who'd like to speak for or against this proposal ordinance? Any one? Carry, don't want to propose a public carry, and go to item B, which is Consider Take Action to Approve and Adopt, and ordinance on first reading, amending the City of Harlem Southern Ordinance, Section 12, true sign regulations, ask, which will read the caption.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance, ordinance number 07-27, Section 12.03, sign regulations pertaining to the maximum sign area allowed in the general retail district, providing for publication and ordaining of the matters related to the foregoing.
Move for approval?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All of us, the fair to say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Carries. Item nine, Public Carry, Consider Ornot, on First Read, to the ordinance number 11-64, which pertains to abandonment of the 60-foot road right of the way described as 0.127 acre tract of land, more or less, pink 60-foot wide road right of way dedicated on Caldwell Subdivision located on the west side of Idaho Street, south of Expressway 77, African City of Harlem.
Mayor and Commissioners, this abandonment was previously approved by the Commission a few months ago for the abandonment of this right-of-way. The applicant at that time was proposing to include this right-of-way, and has proposed a seven-lot multi-family subdivision. The applicant has since indicated he's no longer interested in acquiring this right-of-way. However, he's still going to proceed with his seven-lot multi-family subdivision, therefore, the ordinance needs to be repealed. Staff is recommending approval of the repealing of the ordinance pertaining to the abandonment.
And currently, when, when is this abandoned?
It's a 60-foot right of...
Is it grass or is it a street or...
It's a, it's an improved road, there isn't, it's just 60 feet of right-of-way, but it's not improved at all. And at that time, the applicant had requested this be abandoned. He wasn't included in the proposed seven-lot subdivision. He has since indicated he's, he no longer needs a right-of-way for his subdivision, and he still plans on proceeding with the subdivision without the right-of-way.
So will this be a de facto parking lot?
No, he couldn't include it in his property. No.
It's going to be cut right-of-way.
Right, it just continues right-of-way for the west.
Is there anything to the...
To the west...
Proposed or reasonable?
No, although it is developed towards the west, this here is Rangerville Road, so it is developed along this area. Some of this area is still vacant.
So you're saying on the other side, there's, is there a proposal for any type of development there?
No.
Is it open or...
Most of it is open, but there is some area that is, that is already developed along Rangerville Road, but this section here is undeveloped.
Is that one landlot, own block, or landowner that fronts the expressway, or...
I believe there's maybe more than one, but this section right here, he's going to develop this property here.
It says on the landlot?
No, it is not.
Let's go to item B, Public Carry. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against this item? Anyone? Carry, don't want to propose a public carry, but item B, Consider Take Action to Approve and Adopt an Ordinance, on First Read, repeal ordinance approved, 11-64. Protecting the above mentioned abandonment of the 60-foot rich road right-of-way, ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance abandoning the 60-feet road right-of-way described as a 0.127 acre tract of land, more or less being the 60-feet wide street right-of-way dedicated on Caldwell Subdivision, City of Harlem, County of Texas, as recorded in volume 29, page 5, the Cameron Map Records.
Any discussion? All of us, the fair to say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 10, Consider Take Action to Approve an Interlocal Cooperation Agreement Between the Texas Forest Service and the Harlem Fire Department, Wildland Firefighter Credit Meet, Federal Grant Eligibility Requirements for Wildland Grant Fund.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Basically, what this interlocal cooperation contract allows the fire department to do is train all our firefighters in wildland firefighting. You know, our personnel is trained in structured firefighting, fire rescues, and that type. Wildland firefighting takes special skills. With this grant, or with this interlocal cooperation grant, our goal is to train all our 109 firefighters in our, in our department. And by doing so, it allows us to apply for grants through the Texas Fire Service, Texas Forestry Service, for equipment, wildland firefighter equipment, including fire trucks, or brush trucks. So staff is recommending approval this time.
So what you're saying basically here is you're going to join together, once you join together, it'll be a lot easier for you to apply for the grant?
Yes, because what they...
It'll be helpful for the grant.
Well, currently, what they're, what they're allowing us to do is provide training for our firefighters, and that's just the first step. There's other cities in the valley that have obtained these certifications, and they've been able to apply for, for these type of grants. And I believe the City of Far has a specific fire truck that we would love to have in our, in our arsenal to fight these wildland fires.
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we take action to approve the Interlocal Cooperation Contract.
Second.
Any discussion? All of us, the fair to say aye.
Aye.
And only you can bring up the force of affairs.
Sir. Sir.
And only you can recommend the forest areas.
Oh, yes.
I have to say that, I'm sorry. I didn't.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item eleven, presentation on the overlay and crack seal programs from two thousand to two thousand twelve, the general fund, the community development block grant programs.
Basically, this is a, a presentation of the crack seal program for the City of Arlington. Uh, and this has been in place since two thousand nine through twenty-twelve. And as you can see, uh, we've, uh, basically go crack seal pavement, and it's, uh, to prevent water from entering the cracks and thus destroying the base and subbase. From, um, two thousand nine to, I guess, uh, twenty-twelve, the crews have installed approximately one million two hundred fifty-seven thousand three hundred seventy-seven inner feet of sealant. And as you can see, our projected, uh, quantities for twenty-twelve and twenty-thirteen will be eighty-one point forty-four, uh, miles.
How many units? Yeah, how many units do you have like this? Just one?
Actually, we rent one every year, uh, and we buy the material to, uh, do it, do the work.
We, we spend about fifty thousand dollars a year on renting the piece of equipment and the material itself, and our own crews do the work.
Rent's about thirteen thousand, fourteen thousand dollars.
And the rest of the material?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is basically what we've already done to the other street, right?
That's correct.
Any product?
This, no, this is the crack seal program.
Yeah, the other, the other street is.
The, the other product is an, is an.
Took code.
Yeah.
Are we gonna follow through on the other projects, then?
Yes, sir.
Do we have any?
Yes, sir.
The presentation is also a, a brief overview of the overlay information from, um, two thousand to twenty-twelve, and basically it's broken up into two, uh, parts, general fund and community development block grant funding. Since two thousand twelve, uh, the city has overlaid a hundred and twenty-five point eighty-three miles for a total cost of eight million five hundred forty-six thousand five hundred ninety-nine. And for the CDBG, the city has overlaid twenty-two point thirty-four miles for a total cost of one million six hundred twenty-six thousand six hundred sixty-one since two, two thousand. Total miles of straight overlay completed since two thousand is a hundred forty-eight point thirty-two miles at a cost of ten million two hundred nine thousand two hundred twenty-one. The yearly breakdown of the maps are included in the tax presentation. Basically, this is throughout the city.
Yeah, the question, so if the magic wand was waived and there was more money, uh, you could, you would, you would want to do more?
Uh, correct.
We, we have, we have an eight-year program, overlay program, right now, and the next item, we'll talk about twelve, twenty-twelve, thirteen, we'll talk about the streets we wanted to overlay, uh, that we only do what we can with the funds we are, that are available. But we have an eight-year program, another eight years with overlays, easy enough.
Got a question for you, on the, you started the crack seal.
Oh, nine.
Two-nine, right?
Oh, nine.
Two thousand nine. And what, what is the expected, uh, uh, increase in life, in road, uh, life that you get when you maintain the crack seal program?
Well, water's the enemy. Anytime you prevent, you can prevent water from entering those cracks and destroying the, the caliche, the base.
Yeah, I understand.
And you can extend the life, you can probably get another three, four, or five years out of it.
And that, that, that kinda feeds into my next question, because when we started the overlay program, we wanted, we, we, you know, we looked for an eight-year turnaround, right? We wanted to do.
We tried to stretch that.
Yeah, we, we've been stretching that out because we're getting.
That's correct.
Extended life, life cycle out of the road overlays that we did.
That's it, that's it, and that, this will complement what we're trying to do with the, the other product that we're gonna use, that seater, over the time, because that's, once we do the crack sealing, we go back on one of those streets and do that same seater program, that'll extend another possibly five years. So, the more we extend the need to overlay, the more money we save.
So, so Dan, you're in favor of the drought, then?
Am I? No. I did not say that.
That's what causes some of the cracks that have been to drought.
They're never rains again.
But the, the key is, though, we can get better taxpayer value if we, as to take some of these preventive maintenance programs that are available for the.
Yeah, but it's, Robert, it won't be based just on the overlays, it will also be based on the other product that we can spray on.
Yeah.
If that improves the streets' longevity by five to seven years, we're, we're good.
They, they all complement one another, and you can never get rid of overlays completely. At some point, you will have to overlay, but the longer you extend them, the more money you save. Could be that something.
Get better taxpayer value.
That's exactly right. And during the budget process, I think the mayor or the commission brought up, uh, wanting to look at all the overlays that we've done the past few years to bring up how much, how many miles are done, and that's, can you go back to that one chart? That's what we wanted to do, uh, if you can total those out, and you're looking at about a hundred and seventy miles, that's a lot of overlays. It's not pretty good an overlay over the past few years.
Yeah, we probably gotta kind of off on a slow start doing the crack seal, but I think we made up some mileage on that.
Well, I tell you what, I can see this.
How many miles, how many total miles have been done in the crack seal?
Two hundred and thirty-eight.
Two hundred and thirty-eight.
So, we've exceeded the amount of overlay work that we've done.
Well, unfortunately, we were really able to ramp up for a period of four years of getting an O-six, O-seven, and then, as, you know, and then.
That's correct.
Unfortunately, hasn't pulled back, but we still were able to do some last year and, and, I mean, two thousand ten, eleven, and, and eleven, twelve, and we're just, uh, as things continue to improve, we'll, uh, put more money back into the overlay.
Well, for the money's sake, we were at two, three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand dollars in overlay program, and you're, you're correct, Mayor, and we started ramping up in O-six and putting a million five, million nine, uh, that, we did a lot of roads during that period.
Yeah, but I, I mean, Commissioner, my point's good, and that's that we have other, we're, we're, the crack, seal crack program is along with this new, new program, or maybe things that are gonna, uh, help, help us, particularly where we have to pull back, you know, it's.
Stay in the light of the bar and overlay.
That's correct, and the commission did find both of those programs.
Okay, any, anything else?
I don't know.
Any, any other questions? Uh, thanks. Item, item twelve, consider and take action to approve, uh, reconstruction of Lincoln Avenue for the street overlay program for fiscal year two thousand twelve, thirteen.
Again, uh, each year, the City of Arlington selects an overlay streets that are in, uh, need of repairs, typically the repair consists of one and a half inches of asphalt material on top of the existing material. Staff has selected a list of streets, uh, which would require an overlay, the selected list of streets and the overlay program.
Oh, this is not powerful. Second. Five, ten, small.
Uh, that's our list of overlay projects. The total amount of miles which would be addressed by the overlay was nine point fifty-five Staff is requesting a modification to the street list due to the limited amount of money which was, has been budgeted for street overlay program. Staff is proposing that Lincoln Avenue from Dixieland to Palm Court be completely reconstructed to address failures which have occurred in the subgrade. Lincoln Avenue is located in a commercial area that, with a higher amount of traffic, does this type of repair to the street entrances are given its location. The length of the reconstruction is about twenty-nine hundred feet. A map of the location of the streets which were to be overlayed with Lincoln Avenue highlighted is also included in your package.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we take action to approve the reconstruction of Lincoln Avenue.
Second.
All right, the other way, so a little left, just a little.
Get a motion and second.
Any other discussion? We're, we're learning how to use the iPad. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Um, good, item thirteen, consider and take action to approve a resolution designated with signatures on the City of Arlington's bank accounts and the use of facsimile signatures on checks drawn on those accounts.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. This resolution is needed to, uh, update the signers at Compass Bank for all the city's bank accounts. The signatures will remain the same, essentially what we're doing is removing former finance director's signature from all bank accounts, and the change will be that the facsimile signature will consist of the city manager and the interim city manager, I mean, I'm sorry, the interim finance director. We also have assistant city manager, Gabriel Gonzalez, as a signer, and all, all checks require two signatures. There is a list of the bank accounts attached to, uh, the resolution.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we take action to approve the resolution designated with signatures on the city's.
Yeah, I'll second your point.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Uh, item fourteen, consider and, uh, consider and take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading to amend the City of Arlington's budget for fiscal year two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve.
This is the fourth amendment for this fiscal year. The majority of this amendment is for park improvements that were approved by HCIB on June twenty-sixth. The amount of those improvements are six hundred ninety-three thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars, and they consist of McKelvey Park, Adoia Park, Vestal, Rangerville, and Bonham Parks, an irrigation system at Vestal Park, a comprehensive master, um, plan, and the Splash Park fence. Those are all the, from HCIB. Also included in this amendment is a transfer from general fund to MPO, and this covers expenditures from last fiscal year that were not reimbursed by TaxDOT. So, this balances MPO fund. Free trade bridge has a hundred and thirty thousand, a hundred and twenty is for Project Uncle Demolition, and ten thousand dollars is for the chamber. TDRA, Area Trainage, we had an additional two hundred and nine dollars in revenues, and we're just balancing that account. Also, we have the sanitation fund and the motor vehicle fund that purchased two semi-trucks using the two funds. The Arlington Arts Museum has twenty-five thousand dollars for building improvements, and Municipal Golf Course has a hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine for three John Deere mowers and the irrigation pump repairs that were approved in the last year. That is a total of the budget amendment, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Uh, you wanna read the caption, please?
An ordinance amending the revenue and expenditure budget for the City of Arlington, Texas, for fiscal year October first, twenty-eleven through September thirty, twenty-twelve. Total budget revenues will increase to sixty-four million two hundred fifty-three thousand three hundred fifty-one dollars, and total budget expenditures will increase to sixty-eight million six hundred seventy-eight thousand three hundred ninety-six dollars respectively, providing for publication of the caption of this ordinance and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
I'll second that here.
Essentially, this housekeeping, this, we're saying, so we've already.
Basically, uh.
Square up with the overall budget.
We're doing this as we, as we get grants, or anything additional that is approved by the City Commission.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Item fifteen, are there any board appointments?
I have, uh, this is real, uh, according to the, uh, the, uh, fighting of the Justice Department, if you're pressing, uh, Alfonso Garcia. Alfonso Garcia.
That's the one?
Yes.
And, and you're talking.
Motion to approve board appointments.
I'll make a motion to approve the board appointment.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Item sixteen, opposed to executive session, attorney, attorney consultation, section five, point one, seven, one, two, Texas Department of Public Health, Friday, for the vice of counsel, connection to the City of Arlington, right with these rules, and obligations related to the election order for municipal elections in November two thousand twelve, and also connection with special elections for a term amendment, specified in the agenda items, specified for action and related matters, is there a motion to go into executive session?
So, move it, executive.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're now in executive session, the commission will move into the back room with their attorneys, uh, there is, uh, we're expecting to take, we are expecting to take some action after, uh, we come out of executive session. Session in six, forty minutes. And we're going to go to item seventeen, consider and take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading, calling and ordering the City of Arlington general election for November sixth, two thousand twelve, for the purpose of electing three members for the position of city commissioner for districts three, four, and five. Can you read the order, the caption for that?
An ordinance of the City of Arlington, Texas, calling a regular election to be held on November sixth, twenty-twelve, between the hours of seven o'clock AM and seven o'clock PM for the purpose of election. One commissioner for District Three, one commissioner for District Four, and one commissioner for District Five, establishing July twenty-first, twenty-twelve as the first day of the file, uh, first day to file for a place on the ballot and for the declaration of a write-in candidacy, providing for a filing deadline at five PM on August twenty-fourth, twenty-twelve, as the last day for a write-in candidate to declare candidacy, designating the election precincts, and providing for the handling of certain election procedures via contract with Cameron County, Texas, via official election administrator, adopting the form of ballot, providing for canvassing of the election results, ordering publication and posting, or, or notice of such election, and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Go move it. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This was necessary, because we didn't have elections in May, Senate Bill one hundred resolution that was passed, first elections back to November. Um, is there a mo, is there a motion to table item, next item?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. It's a table item number eighteen.
It's a motion and a second.
I'll go with the second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, I would like to make a motion on item nineteen, to authorize the mayor and city staff to negotiate the local program for the conduct of the general elections on November sixth.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our, uh, business for this evening, and, oh, I'm sorry, citizen, there was no other citizen communication, unless there, just the ones from, uh, that we are adjourned, thank you very much.